We thought maybe he changed. Paul's here. Good. How you doing? I think he waits until they go last and then comes back again.
So I'm gonna distribute this and you're gonna go over to a closed session, discuss personnel, and make decisions about salaries. And we're not gonna discuss it in that discussion. You'll just come back in the room and tell us what you have to say.
Yes.
Mark, what insurance do we have on this building?
I've got a schedule. I'll have to look it up.
I looked up in the attic the other day.
In this attic?
Yes.
You can hit our recoup spot, round recoup spot.
Well, I've seen everything but that. There's some issues out there that need to be addressed. Uh, there's some wiring up there. There's water lines up there that are uninsulated. There's... Yeah. There's a few needles up there, a few rodents, or they were at one time.
I hope everyone has that stuff. Sure. Let's address those issues. We have a, in our... One of the budgets we'll go over tonight is the general budget, the building maintenance item that we don't usually put much money in. Maybe we need to consider that.
All right, Eric.
All right. You guys, I think, have just gotten the two pages of the police budget? I mean, as far as, it's not the whole package, so I have addressed the page numbers in here, but I've put together a little thing to... If you want to start, I figured the lesser controversial items are probably towards the end, so we'll go from the bottom up. And if it's okay, if you have any questions, definitely stop me, but I just kind of referenced the items that there's some significant increase, or some increase from years past or last year. So, first one would be eighty forty-five, which is the proposal to purchase two patrol vehicles. We'd be looking at getting two of the police utilities like we got last time, the Explorers. So, in the years past, we've gotten... Gone to kind of a vehicle replacement program, replacing two cars a year. Once that gets up and completely running, then our oldest car would be five years going out and we'd still have some resale on that, or be able to purpose that to another department in the city. So this would just be in hopes of keeping that up. We've got the equipment that we would be purchasing with the car are just maintenance items, the siren box and... Then the new equipment would be prisoner transport cages. There's a partition between the cargo area and where the inmates would sit, or the passenger compartment. New in-car camera system. There's an equipment vault system in the back. I kind of took some pictures of the current setup. Bottom right is the cage. It's a partitioned cage that keeps the prisoner over, kind of compartmentalized on one side, and then still allows room for some equipment for the officer on the driver's side. We'll have to purchase a vehicle-specific console. We'll be able to reuse the radio, the radar system, you know, obviously the light bar. Everything that we can reuse, we plan on reusing this. We have in the past. So... There would be an equipment install cost and also a price for lettering the car. So that's what would, the eight thousand dollar increase in that budget will represent. So, that is a lease purchase. We actually contacted First State Community Bank, included our two cars and the skid steer that the street department was wanting to get, in hopes of getting a little better interest rate, so this would just be our portion of that lease included in the price for the... On the line item there. Anybody have any questions about that?
Resale value of going to the Explorers and stuff over the Taurus is, I'm sure there's...
I believe it's gonna be better. We haven't sold them yet. Like I said, we just got our first two, but I don't like the Topos were considered, we got them in Crown Vics.
Right.
And, I mean, Taurus seem to be holding up well, and they're roomier, and, I mean... So far, it seems like they're holding their value pretty well.
How many miles do you put on one in five years?
The one that we're getting rid of, granted, seven years. The one that was wrecked the other day had right at a hundred thousand. So we're somewhere between eighty and a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand by the time we get rid of them.
In five years?
In five years.
What's that resale value on Explorer? Would be, because you're all-wheel drive?
So that's the hope, eventually getting to where we could sell the two cars that are going out and purchase one of the cars that we're buying and just have to supply the money for one of the cars annually in the budget, and get away from a lease purchase eventually. And with the lease purchase for the new people on the board, I mean, it's essentially a loan with five annual payments at the end of the term. The vehicle's ours, but because of the city's inability to incur any long-term indebtedness, the way it's written is as a lease, but it's essentially, we own the car. Not essentially, at the end of the loan, we own the vehicles and can sell them, or trade them, or whatever we want to do. Any questions about that?
Well, just 'cause I'm new and I don't know anything.
Okay.
On the ten-month actual for that, eighty forty-five, that's a really big number compared to the budget number. What's the...
Because for our auditing purposes, they have to show the actual cost of the vehicles as they were purchased. So the vehicles themselves are sixty thousand dollars, and the equipment that we put into that is another thirty, forty thousand dollars. So for auditing purposes, we have to show that as of the purchase, but the amount that we paid will not exceed our budgeted amount. So it's a lease purchase, and that's divided up into fifths, five annual payments. And, I mean, it's been that way. You can see in 2015, it was the same way. We just have to be able to account for the purchase of the car, even though that's not what we're paying out of pocket right now.
You're just paying, it's like a fifth of it.
Correct.
Yeah, I got you.
But you have to show the whole cost upfront.
Yes, I got you. Accurate enough?
Yeah.
So like I said, our stopstick, radar, light bar, and then any of the equipment that we have in there, as far as measuring tapes or police line or anything like that, we'll just be transferring a little with the car, and try to reuse as much as we can. There's just some things that wear out and become obsolete that we replace with the vehicles. So the next item would be eighty oh-five. In probably 2009, 2010, we received a grant to purchase five Panasonic Toughbook NDTs. Came with the air card for a year, all the docking stations and the equipment to put those in the vehicles. So we've been running those, I think, since 2010. We're just getting to where some of them are acting up and are not functioning any longer, and it's not really cost-effective to send them back in to fix anymore. So, we're proposing to buy two out of this budget, and then would hope to just roll that in with the vehicles as we go forward on the lease purchase on that, and just replace a computer with the car. I mean, seven years out of a computer is pretty good.
Have you talked to the bank about that?
I haven't. But, I mean, we financed the other equipment that we need as far as the total dollar.
Yeah, I still don't know what the... Whether they're willing to finance a computer in the same term they do a car.
Right. Well, and like I said, I mean, for the siren box or whatever, we're at like nineteen... Nineteen thousand dollars on the K-9 car, probably eleven thousand dollars. Twelve thousand dollars on the equipment that's above the purchase price, and we finance that with the lease. So like I said, this would just be to replace a couple of our units that aren't working now, and continue our NDT program. The other item in that is looking at going to a networked copy machine that would act as a printer, fax machine, scanner, would eliminate all of our individual printers that we're using now, which, there is an annual maintenance cost, but I think the price that we're gonna save in printer ink will certainly cover the annual cost on that. But this would be the forty-six hundred dollar upfront price to give the copier and enter into their agreement. I'll keep rolling until I hear something over. Another item that we have on here, I think we have a thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars budgeted for in seventy-one ninety-five. This is just a maintenance item to get some cartridges and batteries for our tasers that are in need. I think, probably looking at next year, we're gonna look at some programs to try to replace ours, because they're getting to where they're not the newest, shiniest, and they don't want to service them anymore. So we've operated with these for a few years after they've introduced their model that they're wanting to go to.
How come we never put any money in this line item before?
Most of the time, the cartridges that we got, we used firearms sometimes for purchasing the cartridges, but we don't tase a whole lot of people, so the cartridges we got have lasted us for a while. They do have a shelf life, so at one point, a few years ago, we had to buy, we had to buy another round of cartridges and some training cartridges to get everybody recertified, but it's just that time. The IPI seventy-one ninety is, again, just an annual percentage increase that we get with, this is the computer software, our recording software that we write our reports in, so it's three hundred fifty dollars, but I wanted to know if it is higher than we had last year. Moving up to telephone, which is sixty-seven hundred.
Took a hell of a jump.
It is. We are looking at, and I would like to ask your permission, in years past, shortly after nine eleven, offered a program to law enforcement, and for the whole time I've been here, they supplied us two G flip phones for the police officers at really no expense. I mean, if they made an out, long-distance call or something on there, there was, you know, fifty cent charge or a dollar charge or something on there, but for the most part, we haven't paid anything for phone service for the patrol officers since I've been here. Last year, we got notification that they were no longer offering that program, and that they were discontinuing coverage for the two G phones. So you have to have a data plan with their things now. So I am proposing a, just a flat fifty dollar stipend, a monthly stipend, to the officers for the use of their cellphone that they're using for city business. One of the things that is required for their mobile data terminal, they have to authenticate, and before they, it'll let them access our computer systems. So we have a third-party authentication that sends a code to them when they go to sign-on, so that they can verify it is who it is. So they're required to use their phone for that, to get this code.
When you say "their phone," Eric, are you talking about the personal?
Their personal phones. They're using their personal phones for this, so this is just to help reimburse some of that, since they are using a percentage of that on city time and for city business. And this is fairly standard. The Sheriff's Department, I think, offers something similar as far as the fifty dollars.
Basically, the same thing we did for Jacobs up in the park. When he got rid of the phone up in the park, we started paying a proportion of his cellphone.
The phones we currently issue will not be...
The only phones we have issued now are mine and Jason's. So the two G phones that we had issued to the police department are the police officers that are no longer being serviced, and they're not carrying them anymore.
How does the officers feel about that? I mean, are they fine with using their own? Or...
I mean, the other alternative is to issue them a phone through here, which is gonna be considered, it's gonna be twice as much, since they have to have a data plan. A lot of them would carry their own phone and forward the work phone, so they didn't have to carry two phones. And then just, you know, any block, they can block their number or whatever for people that they don't want to have their phone number. So, just trying to give some incentive for them and a little, a little help on their cellphone business. And again, this is certainly not a new idea. That's something other agencies have been doing for quite a while.
Because we have some city phones, don't we?
Yes.
And are they on a group plan?
Well, I mean, we found them at AT&amp;T. We have a plan for people who have phones, but I use my personal phone, because the plan I have is cheaper than the city's plan. So we just do a monthly payment for me to use my own phone, like Mike is proposing.
I don't like carrying two.
No. I don't like carrying one, but...
Gary has owned, Sandra has owned, and... Who'd you say, Gary and...
Gary, Kenny. Gary, Kenny, Eric, Sandra, and...
Who've you got?
Well, the people who have phones that are owned by the city are...
Eric, Jason, Kenny, and Gary.
But that's more expensive, though, than the fifty dollars.
Yes.
That's about a hundred dollars on a team.
I would think so. Well, in fourteen and fifteen, it was ten thousand, two fifty-one, and fifteen, it was eleven, three forty-six.
Well, but after...
And then it went down in sixteen...
But then they added... At that time, the internet and the NDT air cards and everything were coming out of that line item. After that, we actually separated those line items and funded each separately. So we could kind of keep track of that. Anything else on that? The next one we have is the one that we just talked about, is safety and medical supplies. We're looking at purchasing a trauma bag for all the patrol cars, which the Ambulance District has offered to help us stop some of the supplies we need as far as gauze and gloves and tape and things that we would need for first aid for the officers when they get on the scene of these, essentially on page six, I call it. Another new item that we've never had before, we added a K-9 expense line item just for supplies, vet supplies or whatever comes up. In all honesty, we could probably fund a little bit more on that, but we're certainly just willing to get anything that we can get there, just to get the ball rolling. I believe they're, they said they're going up tomorrow. We'll get that though. Actually, they're going to look, but this may be the dog that we'll be getting. They sent us a picture of two or three dogs that we had to pick from, so this is one of the runners-up in that venture, so... Now, probably the most controversial one, the salaries. I know we talked about in a work session or a session here a while back about the Senate bill and the change in the police clerk and court clerk positions. You know, at that time, we decided to move that to a full-time court clerk position, or separate those two positions. And I suggested at the time adding an eleventh officer, so I still have that in the budget, and I've made my proposal here. This would allow us the opportunity to have a full-time detective that we would promote from within, and then hire to replace his position on the road. I think, and I know that this is usually a bone of contention, but I think that it's gonna be a good thing for the citizens. I think it's gonna be a good thing for the department. You know, in the event of any vacancy, or vacation, or sick leave, or trainings that typically put us short-handed, I think that we would be able to move personnel around and cover without any significant loss.
Say if you add that eleventh officer, okay, what would that do to your overtime? Would that decrease your overtime, what you're paying right now in overtime?
Theoretically, yes. Yes. And we actually reduced the overtime, I believe it was last year. You know, we dropped it five thousand dollars last year, and, I mean, we've already gone over some, but we've worked four-handed some of this here.
What's your starting pay for an officer that would become a...
Twelve eighty-two, which brings us to our next twelve eighty-two. Yeah. I'll jump ahead to that. So, this is our, this is our current salary range, or the current schedule that the officers are getting picked now. And then underneath, I've actually attached the Sheriff's Department's starting salary here in St. Genevieve County. You know, and the adage has been for a long time, you know, that we do have a decent benefit package, you know, paying the full family benefits, which is a great benefit. So it would kind of even out in the long run. Checking with them, they're starting even their... The lowest pay grade that they had was for a non-commissioned maintenance mechanic-type position that starts out still like four dollars an hour higher than we start our patrol officers out. The non-commissioned jailers, non-commissioned officers, again, was starting out in the sixteens with no experience, and a road deputy for the Sheriff's Department, I've got it here, starting out at seventeen eighty-two an hour, which is five dollars an hour more than we're paying for no experience. So, looking at their insurance, they pay three hundred dollars a month for family insurance up there, so it still evens out to a little more than six hundred dollars a month in the pocket of difference between our officers and the Sheriff's Department guys on our new hires. And like I said, they have a pay grade, you know, for experience that'll hire, you know, up to eighteen fifty-six an hour with experience. And we raised our starting salary recently, but, I mean, we're still just nowhere in the ballpark, and, you know, I'm certainly, I'd like to think I'm a reasonable person, and I know that an eighty thousand dollar jump is significant. But when we had our last meeting, you know, there was some talk of wanting to evaluate salaries in the city across the board, and I just think it's... There are comparative studies that I could do with other agencies in other counties, and I'm certainly willing to do that.
Comparable with the other communities of this size.
But the problem is, I'm not losing officers to other comparable agencies to the size. I'm losing officers in new hires, and, I mean, I've not lost too many of our officers to the Sheriff's Department, mostly because of the relationship that we have with the Sheriff's Department, that they're not gonna recruit our guys and steal our guys. But they have gotten a couple of them, and, you know, certainly with our blessing. But where it hits us is on the front end, where we're trying to recruit people, and they've got a nice new facility, and they're paying five, six dollars more an hour than we are. You know, it's hard, it's easy to compare other agencies of our size, except that this one's two miles up the road from us and is superior in a lot of ways to...
I'm not disputing any of that, except the difference is the ability to pay.
And again, I'm not sitting here asking for an eighty-five thousand dollar jump in this, but I think it's important for you guys to know where we're at in comparison with another agency that's in our town.
What does it take, say, uh, let's see if I can word this right. We have an officer that quits, all right. He moves on, so we hire another one. How much are we paying him in non-production until he actually starts producing, you know what I'm saying, to get him up to where he's ready to go?
There's a twelve-week training program where they're in field training. If we hire an officer with experience, typically, they don't wait the twelve weeks. I mean, they'll be able to move out and be on their own.
And they're being paid at this point?
Yes.
Okay. And we're running two officers at the same time, another officer with this person?
Yes, sir. With this last hire that we made, we actually hired him before he was eligible to be commissioned, so we hired him at a discounted rate and started a lot of that training process before he was commissioned. He did go through and take his post-exam last week and has been commissioned now and is certified through the state, so we'll bump him up to our starting salary rate. But that kind of, it worked out pretty well. It's a little bit of a gamble, you know, on the chance that he doesn't pass the test, but we had about a two-week period, and I figured it was worth the risk, and like I said, he passed and is doing fine, so... So yeah, there's, assuming it's a new officer that doesn't have any experience, they could theoretically go that twelve weeks in the training program. That's not saying that they're not producing anything. I mean, certainly by the three-week mark, four-week mark, I mean, they're gonna be driving, stopping cars, and taking reports, and learning the ropes.
So how much money, once, again, how much money is this costing us before we get this officer in full training and ready to go?
That would be at our starting salary times a month and a half, so probably five thousand dollars, four thousand dollars.
And what kind of turnover have we seen?
This is, this is including the insurance that we're paying and, without taxes, I mean, it's... The Sheriff's Department's at three thousand dollars a month, we're at like two thousand dollars a month on the straight time, and then, like I said, we pay twelve hundred dollars a month for employee for insurance, and then the uniforms that we've paid for, and so... I mean, obviously, that's a one-time expense for startup.
Eric, do we really need the eleventh officer? I know it'd be nice to have. I'm not gonna argue that point with you. But, in a budget crunch, do we really need that officer?
I think that it would be beneficial. I mean, we can go back up. Just looking at some of the cases that we've had, you know, Jason and I myself, typically Jason, but he or, and/or I do a lot of the investigations. You know, we've certainly solved some big cases. There are things that happen here contrary to popular belief, but we do still have some open cases. I mean, there's probably seventy open cases since 2016 that we haven't cleared yet. You know, burglaries, felony stealings, sex crimes, and arson. We get inundated with forgeries and identity theft, which, you know, some of those can be solved. Most of them are, you know, overseas scams. So I certainly think that we can justify the position. You know, obviously, that's gonna be a philosophy question that this board will need to answer, what they want to do. I certainly think that the citizens would benefit from it. I think that the police department would benefit from it. I realize that it's an expense, and I realize that it's an ongoing expense, but I think having a dedicated person that has the ability to devote the time to these cases is gonna be hugely beneficial to the department. When I started at the department, and nothing against previous administrations, and I'm not saying that I've done anything spectacular, but when I took over, we had a reputation of being a call-taking agency. You know, you can call the police department to report your house broken into, but you know nothing's gonna happen with it. You know, they'll have it on file in some report, but there's not, there wasn't really any real hope of getting made whole or getting your stuff back. And I think that we've worked hard, and we've gotten to the place that we have a decent reputation. People aren't afraid to call us. They know that if they call, we're gonna put some effort into their case and try to get them some resolution. And I think that this is just another step to solidify that and even improve that from where we're at. Again, I mean, I know that the population hasn't grown in twenty years, and, you know, that they had five officers in the seventies, and all, I know all the things that have been said, and they're not untrue, but it's a different demographic than we had in the seventies.
Exactly. Times have changed.
Times have changed.
We are, just look around, just read the newspaper around. And I know this is a small community, and it's relatively safe, and we want to keep that, because that's what the people want, so...
When I started here, it was budgeted for eleven officers, and I was asked to drop an officer and increase the pay for everybody. We dropped the officer. We didn't get the pay increase. And, you know, I think that, again, I can't stress enough how happy I am to have Lieutenant Crump working with us. He does a phenomenal job. He's a great investigator. He's gonna continue to be a great investigator. This isn't going to relieve he or I of any investigative responsibility, and, you know, certainly, six eyes are better than two on these cases. You know, so for any big cases, we're still gonna help, but we still have... You know, so for any big cases, we're still going to help, but we still have administrative things to do through the day. You know, there's still a million other things that we're doing, especially him, that take away from the focus that one needs to have in working one of these cases. I mean, you know as well as I do, heroin's getting bad, stealings are getting bad.
Due to that. It's the problem we have, is your stealing's getting bad as a drug problem grows.
Exactly.
People, that's what they do to get drugs.
It's all related.
Plus the position you've lost. Who's going to do that?
Well, that's something else that Jason and I will have to take on, is the responsibility of the police clerk. And, you know, we've been phasing that in for a while, but there's still some of the benefits she does that will need to be absorbed by us. So, I mean, it's not a tremendous increase from where we were, but I think it's going to be a huge benefit, and I think you're going to see a lot better success in years to come if we can fund this.
You know, you and I have always argued in the past, and I still have that feeling, I still feel that way, and I, we've been through that whole every budget time, you know? One is one, whatever you say. One is none, and two is one, and whatever, you know, that whole thing with people, whenever people on duty. I still, and you've been over your scheduling and how you schedule and all of those things, I still wonder how many times we have, and I'm just, just my own personal opinion, and you guys certainly have all of your own, but in my own personal opinion, I still, how many times do we have three officers on duty? I don't think we need more than two on duty at any time in this town of this size. I, that's, again, that's my personal opinion, and there could, something can come up, and you need 20 officers on duty at that particular time. There's not enough, so what is that level? And that's what this board certainly got to decide. I would much rather look at looking, trying to bring the salaries more in line than adding another person. I just thought...
I agree with Dick. There's no way I could go out in one of those cars for $12 or something an hour.
And I know we did a decent bump about a year or two ago, but it was a bump, but it, I...
Well, and it's hard. And I realize that it's a problem across the board, and I'm certainly not complaining by any stretch, but when the cost of living is 5% or 6% a year, and we're getting a 2% or 3% raise, you know, we're just moving backwards. And these guys that have to support a family, all of us have to support a family, and I get that. But I don't think that we're doing them any favors, and it makes it a lot harder to keep your eye on the prize and your head in the game when you're worried about your electric getting shut off, or, you know, your car getting reloaded, or whatever the case may be.
Inflation for 2017 is going to project to be 1.4%.
Yeah, I think, certainly what you've shown, and as you say, we don't really compete a whole lot with the Sheriff's Department, but we're still going through, you're still, we're losing two or three a year anyway. And I don't know, I don't know that whatever we can do that's going to eliminate that, certainly not this year, but we need to strive to get the better.
Probably our biggest conflict, or our biggest struggle is in the recruiting side. You know, we have gotten to where we're getting a handful of applications where we used to get, you know, 15, 20 for a position.
I think that's happening, that's happening across the board with any kind of job like that. I struggle with that where I work. The workers aren't there. And so, you better do a very good job of keeping who we have. The only opinion I'd had on the 11th is, is if we have that kind of turnover, and we lose one or two, and then, boy, then we really got some problems. So, it's something to look at, you know? So, I know it's a big expense, but...
So, just so I get this squared away here. You're, it looks like you're proposing a little over $20,000 personnel increase in budget. With that $20,000, you're planning on hiring an 11th officer?
Yes.
And...
Elimination of the clerk.
Yeah, we pay, we pay half the clerk's salary now, so this...
So, that offsets that cost a little bit?
Yes.
So, and then I'm looking, but that wouldn't include any kind of raise for current officers?
And typically, we don't set that. I mean, it's something that comes from the board as far as the raise for the officers.
And then I'm looking, does the addition of another officer, does that raise employee insurance costs?
Yes.
So, I'm looking, and employee insurance is the same, $119 and $119. And the workman's comp and all that, I think, I imagine an additional employee would raise...
Yes, all that. I don't have those figures, and the proposal here was just to see if you would fund the 11th officer, and then the final budget would need to reflect any of the change in insurance. But those are things that we'd have to get from our insurance company.
Martin, what do we pay a, I guess, an average skilled street worker? Somebody who has a license to drive the vehicles and...
Well, 10 to 13.
I have a hard time paying an officer $1286 to strap on a bulletproof vest, go out on a domestic dispute. I wouldn't do it.
I would do it. We'd bring in the last street park employee, what's their starting?
$10.50.
I can certainly see the, I mean, the benefit of additional officers, I think, is without a doubt. It's just the cost, I think, we're trying to figure out. Is it possible to replace the clerk position with someone who would do that as, there's not also be an officer as a sole, as another employee that could do that position? And then maybe, maybe could do that position cheaper?
As a full-time police officer?
Not as a full-time police officer.
As part-time police officer?
Or just as a civilian? Is that a position that, because right now, it's filled by someone...
We were having that discussion today. The amount of time she spends on police clerk work has been diminishing with automation and the reports being...
So, it's not a job that would be a full-time job for...
The court work has expanded, and will get worse.
Right.
And so, I was questioning the same thing. I said to them, I said, "I don't think our most experienced law enforcement personnel are better on the street than in the office doing paperwork." And he says, "Just not that much paperwork." It's just...
Right. So, it's not something that could support a full-time, dedicated position?
Other than, other than hours, which can be handled in other ways.
Or just like a secretary-type person in town who, you know, there just wouldn't be enough work for a full-time? They'd be sitting there a lot.
I think that we can, I think that we can handle the workload that will be lifted in that position.
In 6305, covert operations? If it's covert, we can't know anything about it. So, you shouldn't put that at us?
Right. Yeah, super-secret. Typically, that would be buy money or something like that, for when you need to make some narcotics buy.
Can I take advantage of the fact that Jason's here?
Yeah, absolutely.
Jason, how many deputies do you have on the road?
We got, if you count, sorry, with the sheriff, down to our newest officer, we have 23 officers on the road. Covering the population of 14,000. But it's probably a much larger area than...
And how many miles?
45,000.
I said, he's an example of leaving for better pay as well. He used to work for the city as well.
That's, you know, that's a problem we're always going to have.
It's always going to be, it's not unique to here. Again, I don't think our bigger problem is losing officers to the Sheriff's Department. Like I said, we have a great relationship with them, the officers that they've, that have moved from here to there. You know, we've discussed with the sheriff and myself, and, you know, there's some that I didn't want to lose, there's some that I was glad to be done with. But he knew that on the front end. I think our bigger struggle is the recruiting of new officers, of getting new candidates when we have a position open. And seeing, I think that we have done well with getting good candidates after a tremendous amount of recruiting and work and luck. But seeing the candidates that they're putting out consistently in the Sheriff's Department, you know, the number of applicants that they're getting versus what we are getting is disheartening. And again, they have a nice new facility, they pay considerably more, they pay, they're one of the better-paying agencies around. And that's not, in my opinion, that's not a bad position to be in, but I'm not the one that holds the purse strings, so...
The most recent position you filled with that, how long was that position open before you were able to get it filled?
A few months. And some of that, some of that was the applicant pool, and some of that was just budgetary Like I said, I realize that this is a physical debate. I don't know that you and I have ever argued about it, Dick, but, you know, we certainly debated about it for many years, and it's always going to be a debate, and I realize that. You know, the bottom line is, it's not, it's not the police department's fault that the city limits haven't increased, or that the population hasn't increased, or that the tax-paying entities haven't increased. You know, we have a job to do, and we have to deal with the situation as it presents itself. The population and numbers might be the same as it was, but in comparison, the overall disregard for law enforcement and contempt for law enforcement is only going to steadily get worse. I mean, you guys have seen what's going on in St. Louis, that's not that far from here. You know, and the discontent that we got, we've got, we had a person that we were sitting on the hospital this week from Illinois that was very belligerent and very anti-establishment, and, you know, we couldn't put our hands on him, and, you know, he knew his rights, and he was going to kill all of us, and, you know, we're not that far separated from that situation. And granted, it's not something that's going to come up every shift. It's not something that may come up every month, but we're going to have situations where we need, we need the staff. And, you know, I certainly, you know, I've heard the arguments or the concerns, you know, that there are two or three officers going on traffic stops. We certainly discourage our officers from oversaturating unnecessary situations. But if an officer can justify to me the need for having an additional officer there, I'm not going to dispute that. If they feel like they, they need somebody else there to help with something, or it's an officer safety situation, or they have more than two people in the car, or somebody's fidgety or reaching under the seat, or, you know, there's a thousand scenarios that could play out that justify a second or a third cover car being there. You know, and every situation is different. There are times that I've got two or three people there that don't need to be there, and that's something, that's why you pay us, to keep on top of that and try to keep them from doing that. You know, and I think that we do a good job of staffing. You know, there's a lot of times that Jason and I cover the shifts ourselves when we don't have people, and we're willing to do that. You know, we love the city, we love the department.
I tell you what, in this day and age, and with that is, you better have enough eyes there to defend yourself. Because all you have to do is say the wrong thing, do the wrong thing, and then we're all wide open for lawsuits and everything else. And don't think it can't happen. It's happening everywhere.
Whatever happened to body cameras we talked about three years ago?
Uh, kind of, they went by the wayside nationally. There was just no real consistent policy or, I guess, preferential policy that was definitive enough to decide when you should have it, when you shouldn't have it, you know, what's an invasion of privacy, what's not an invasion of privacy. You know, we've certainly ramped up our efforts to have good in-car cameras to catch, and most of the time, they have, all the time, they have the body mics that can at least capture audio of what's going on. So, I mean, a lot of it came down to funding. You know, there was talk of a mandated body cam policy nationally, and no real funding to support that. And mostly, agencies, the overwhelming majority of agencies have not gone to that or funded that themselves. I mean, the initial cost is one thing, but the ongoing cost of maintaining those videos and being able to access those videos was really quite costly. So, I think it just kind of died on the vine. Any other questions?
Uh-uh.
I'm going to turn this back over to Sue and let her have her computer back. Thank you for letting me use your computer.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. You're good. I don't know that I need to...
Well, you should say it. I think it already knows.
But it was urgent.
Okay.
This is the time to decide. We don't have another meeting, this is, we have to decide.
Decide what?
Pardon?
We recite his budget? His budget?
Decide.
Everybody's right. No, but what are we talking about in general, in general or right now with him?
Well, unless you want to have another meeting, you need to make a decision tonight relative to this budget.
I, where's the money going to come from?
Well, honey, I didn't...
I thought, I thought we were...
Whatever, whatever we spend beyond, you know, it's going to do salaries.
Yeah, but I thought we were, the reason we were doing it this way, so you and the department heads write the budget, and then you come to us with a balanced budget.
Well, it's balanced. We have a balanced budget. No matter what city you're in, the budget's balanced. The only question is, I mean, SUSE's projection includes these figures. And it's a policy decision, it isn't a financial decision at this point.
How much money do we have in reserve as of right now, without taking anything out?
General fund reserve? Because there's reserves in water, reserves in sewer...
General fund, that's what we're going to be operating out of, right?
It's $545,000.
Has that been going up or going down every year?
It's been going up.
Of how much per year? Approximately, so...
About $30, $50,000.
It has been?
This is basically the last beat.
That's going up?
Yeah. It was going down. During times, dollars, two budgets ago.
Okay, great. I guess I have another question for Eric then, if I can ask it. If it really came down to, and I hate to put a scenario out there, one or the other, 11th officer or the increase, and I really hate to ask that question and stuff, but which would be the most beneficial for the city?
That's a tough question. I mean, I would say, the people that are here, we need to take care of, the people that have, that have been willing to work for what we've been paying them, deserve an increase.
Have you, well, have you done a projection of what any percentage increase would mean for your budget?
As far as...
You showed us the hourly figures, but...
Right.
Depending on the increases.
And is this a percentage across the board, everybody, or how does that?
I mean, I, yeah, I mean, we're looking at the $20,000 that is proposed to there dividing it among the eight officers. I mean, I'm sure they wouldn't, wouldn't be upset with that.
Eric, run that by me again.
77, propose the 11th officer, take that $20,000.
Oh, take that $20,000, divide it among the officers we have right now?
We're gonna have to come up with an allocation.
Right.
I still think we need to find a way to do both.
I don't think we need 11 officers.
I mean, we spend, I won't even into that. You know, there's list after list about how St. Genevieve ranks like third on the nicest places to live, beautiful town, blah, 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 all that stuff, and we think that's real great. There's also lists out there on easiest places to buy meth, easiest places to buy heroin, number one place of our top 10 places of heroin deaths under the age of 25. Guess what? St. Genevieve's on all those lists.
Where are these lists that you're talking about?
They're all over online. Same places the other ones are, they're all over online, on Facebook and stuff. There's all kinds of things out there and I'm, we're losing the war.
One thing about everything online, it's always the truth.
Well, same with everything you say. You know, there's just so much, we're losing the war with the young kids and I'm tired of seeing that. Having an extra investigator out there and tracking these things down and actually staying with them. You know, we do have an influx of people that are taking advantage of our, well, relatively inexperienced police department when we have such a revolving door. You know, you got, if you can keep the experienced officers rotating out, they take a lot of information with them in their heads that they've built up over the years and we're starting new again. And he's having to learn the community, learn the people. And I believe, number one, we need to pay for the experience and number two, we need to get somebody in there that is dedicated to researching all these leads and that's his main and primary job, not answering a dog barking call right in the middle of investigating something. You know, I think we need that dedicated officer and I think we need to pay the ones we have.
Well, how do we go about voting on this, Mayor?
The low on it. I'm motioning low on this budget.
Don't hide it, but do it by line.
Do we first go through the whole closed session part with the salary issues before?
Well, we can't go closed session, we didn't advertise it. You gotta talk about general.
Raises.
Costly raises. Have a board when you do the joint closed session.
Gotcha, okay.
Basically Joe has this theory, I have mine, you know, and it's up to the rest of the board to decide what they want to do.
Being in the schools, I see the problems that are, that a lot of these kids are having. And I've, I've lost students to heroin overdoses. It's here, it's going on.
Oh, yeah.
And I, if the main objection to adding an additional officer is simply a financial issue, then I think we try to find a way to financially make it happen. I don't see how an addition of an officer can be a negative for the community in any way other than we gotta figure out how to pay for it.
You know, we allocated some of the money of the PIBA lease to the fire department. We can allocate some of that to the police department to help cover this as well.
Well, the PIBA money's gonna come into the general.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying, you know.
That's, I voiced my opinion on it the last time, you know, the last meeting and stuff. I hate seeing that just disappearing to the general fund. I'd like to see that applied to something we can wrap our hands around and stuff and this might be one of them.
I don't think we can afford not to do it, I mean.
I don't think we can afford not to give our officers a good raise too. I think we need to do that also, Joe.
I don't agree. We both is, let's make it both happen.
That's what I mean.
I mean, anything you can do as a board to improve support for law enforcement, to improve support for firefighting capabilities, I think you have to, you have to look at and you gotta figure out how to do it. So I don't, nobody's gonna look at a town and say, you know what, their, their police department is just too well-funded and too good. You know, it's one of those things that you need to get it, you need to get it the best you can get it.
That's why I moved to this town because of, felt it was a good place for me to raise my kids. I felt it was safe. When that eclipse was going on, I was up at the park. I was talking to people that come here from Chicago and everywhere else and the presence of the police we had during that event going on. Folks, there was a lady here with three of her daughters, young daughters, her husband couldn't make the trip and I wanted her to be, and she was camping up there at the fairgrounds and she felt safe. And that's important, that's a basic need of the people, it's a basic need of any employee. You know, we, we have a, in this, when you're in this workforce, we have, it's a balanced beam. We have our customers who are people here in this town and we have our employees. And it's our job as leaders to try to keep that balance beam level.
You know, that's something, Mayor, that's something, when people ask about living in St. Genevieve, and seriously, this is one thing I always say, it's a nice place to raise a family, it's a safe place.
Yes, it is, and it's, and there's good people here. And whether we like it or not, you know, there was something brought up and I hate to say this, but we have a lot of rental property in this town, we have a lot of subsidized housing. I don't wanna be critical, but you tend to have problems going with that. And I deal with that on a different level too. I deal with people that have made a lot of bad choices. And I've had to deal with Eric, I've had to deal with the police department and for whatever reason, and it's important that we have cooperation and we continue to protect the people that aren't. We just had a problem over in Robinwood, I believe, a couple of weeks ago and I think we dealt with that over there. So it's.
When you get to a point where you think you don't need very many officers on duty because you feel safe, that's because the officers we do have on duty are doing their job.
I agree.
So, I don't wanna wait until we don't feel safe anymore to hire that other officer. I wanna keep it going while we're, we still feel relatively safe. It's that simple.
You say the budget?
About what you do.
The budget is balanced.
We're gonna have a reserve at the end of the year.
How much are we talking about being able to contribute to the cash reserves right now? If, if, if we adopt this balanced budget as presented by the departments? I know it's hard.
We have projected a.
I know you're guessing, you're guessing income, so that makes it hard, but.
Well, we projected no increase in revenues.
Right.
And just the general fund, like a little over, well, 545,000.
At the end of this fiscal year?
No.
Rates or anything.
At the end of 2018, budget.
So that's, what would be in the cash reserve? What would be in it now, what would be the increase in it from now to then? Like how much are we talking about growing the reserve?
Just in the next.
In the next year? Is that something you can guess?
Well, I'm working on it.
We'll go back to the last three years and see what it was per year and, you know, maybe that would help some.
It was about 40,000.
Per each year?
In general fund.
Okay, an increase of 40?
So we have, we have the balanced budget to cover the departmental things plus 40,000 that we're gonna put in reserve. Estimate, give or take, hope to. Okay.
Isn't a dollar of the city budget a dollar of the city budget for whatever department? In other words, whatever total revenue we have is spread out between all the departments.
Some things are your mark.
Some things, yeah, like water and sewer operate on our own.
Right, but I mean streets and leagues.
Well, we have, we have.
Street operator.
We have transportation sales tax, it can only be since it's been for streets, so, no. The sales tax revenue, general sales tax revenue and property tax revenue go into general fund and they're unrestricted in their use. Pretty much everything else.
Goes into a department.
You know, what's hard to do in just coming in at the tail end of last year when all these different meetings were done and just seeing the final budget and kinda going through it this year, you know, getting a little more in-depth, you know, of the whole process and stuff. I've done budgets myself for a long time, but, you know, it's hard to take all that information and put it all together to try to decide on a budget and stuff of what department deserves this and what department doesn't.
That is hard to do.
Well, we try and, I mean, the process that I go through is every department comes in with their wish list.
Right.
We talk, we, you know, I say, no, we're gonna do this. And we end up with what I think is, for me, are the critical policy decisions for the board. And so, you know, you didn't even see some things that I just didn't think we needed or just. When Eric came to me with his budget, I have a tendency to say, no, we can't add another police officer. But I did, I pledged to him I would let him present that to the board. Because I think it's an important policy decision, it's not an administrative decision.
Right, well, what's hard to do is just like, you know, the last meeting and stuff, we talked about a skid steer for the street department and probably a worthy thing. If that would come up after this meeting, I'd vote no on the skid steer and put 40,000 dollars in their pocket.
We can still do that.
I mean, that's the hard part of talking about trying to mix all of that together.
Your party?
That's the hard part of trying to mix all these individuals.
Can't we use some water and sewer money to buy that? They using it? Yeah.
No.
Why not?
Well, come here then.
Let's get back to this budget right here.
It has to be a piece of equipment they can use.
It will.
We went through the skid steer, we bought the tractor.
Okay, tell me you're gonna use it.
I just used that as an example, I didn't mean to pick on Gary. But that's what's hard to put the whole thing together when it's individualized like this is.
Gary also brought the example.
I'm okay, we're not in, we're not in danger of losing a bond rating currently, are we? Yes, no? Because of the cash reserves?
Well, no, we're on the watch list.
Okay.
They'd like to see our reserves grow.
Is that like double secret probation, you just don't know?
No, it's just, they didn't reduce our rating and they said, we think you need more reserve, we're gonna watch it.
Set one point.
At some point, they might lower our rating, which has no effect on us unless we try and borrow money. And then it will.
How often do we borrow money?
Where we need it. Not very often, or do refinancing. But frankly, I don't see interest rates getting any lower than they are now, so you're not gonna, I don't think you're gonna be refinancing our existing debt, it could be down to almost no interest count.
Right.
Could that rating affect our ability to attract anybody? Like new development or anything?
So, it has a marginal effect on the cost of borrowing money.
Well, if, for me, in keeping that in true, I would, I would rather, I would rather grow the cash reserves less and do this.
By this you mean by getting an extra 11th officer and also giving the?
And I'd like to see a raise.
Correct. What percentage of a raise are you talking, which we can talk about later, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't talked about a percentage.
Well, right, something that. Right now, you just need to put a dollar figure in, we can work out the budget figure later.
Something that I wanna stress, I mean, again, we're reasonable people. I mean, I don't wanna see us enter into a program that we're not gonna be able to support in a couple of years because we're getting into our cash reserves and that's not, I mean, I'm not here asking for a dollar amount from you guys. I just would like at least the consideration and wanted to make you aware of where we are in standing with the other agency that's in our town. I don't want to implement a, you know, a step plan or anything that we're not gonna be able to support in a couple of years and end up going backwards or put us in, put the city in a bad spot. That's not my intent or my proposal here. You know, again, we try to be reasonable and I think that especially the people that have been on the board for a while realize that we are, I don't wanna be pitted against the street department or the fire department. You know, we all have a job to do and, you know, and I think that we've always done a good job since I've been here of keeping those departments separate and everybody putting in their budget based on their merit. I would just appreciate any consideration that you guys can give and try to land on our feet, so.
Going back to our ongoing debate, you don't feel comfortable in doing any rescheduling to schedule enough time where you'd end up with enough time to virtually add that person without adding an officer? I mean, if I, if I think, again, going back to the two versus three people that seem to show up or whatever are on duty, again, I don't get into your scheduling and never, but if, if that was, if your scheduling was rearranged where there wasn't three people on and there was only two people on it, would that allow you to add the, would that allow you to add that extra person? Not add the extra person, but just create that extra person.
Create that extra position. You know, we've looked at eight-hour shifts before and there's still, there's still a lot of coverage there, you know, there's. The scheduling options that we've looked at in the past really weren't any better than what we have. You know, one of the benefits, and I think the Sheriff's Department would agree, is our 12-hour scheduling with the officers because they get off a three-day weekend every other week. I mean, that's a, that's a big benefit in itself. You know, and I know that they've actually switched to the schedule that we have, not probably because of us, but I think their guys are happy with it. They were doing a 212, on, 212 off every day, you know, every weekend's two on, two off and they did that for years, they've switched over and the officers seem to appreciate the benefit. And above that, I mean, it's, it's, I think it gives you the most coverage you can get. I mean, again, you know, the adage that, you know, nothing ever happens here, it's a safe town, you know, why do we need more officers, you know, the opposite argument could be made. It's a safe town because we have the officers that we have and they're doing what they're supposed to do.
But if, I just was playing with, I'll just throw this out there. If you had 18,000 people in St. Genevieve County and there's 23 deputies, that's about 800 people per deputy. If we got 4,500 people in the city and we got 10 officers, that's 450 people per officer. Yeah, they got a whole lot of bigger area to cover. Now, is that a good thing or a bad thing? They're covering more area and covering more people with less officers. Are they comfortable with the amount of people that they got? I don't, I'm sure they got budget restraints and he'd probably like to have twice as many deputies out there as what he's got.
But 4,000 of the people that they cover are covered by us. You know, a couple hundred of the people that they cover.
Subtract that and you're still 600 people compared to 450 people, so. But is the fact that you are more concentrated, is that a good thing or a bad thing? Can you cover more concentrated people with less people than you can cover all the square miles of a county?
I think that the density of population is gonna increase your number of incidents in that small area. You need more officers for that population density. Yeah, if I remember from The Sims, you know, when you play the computer game The Sims, you gotta have your stations close to each other to.
I mean, they run more courses a year than we do. You know, they run more calls for service a year than we do.
Well, sure.
But they have twice the staff, you know, more than twice that. We, there are times that we run three officers. It's about three hours a day that we have, that we have three officers on, it's during the busiest time. It's not 24 hours a day, it's not seven days a week, well, it is seven days a week, but it's not 24 hours a day that we have a supervisor and two officers on and the supervisor goes off and it's back down to two officers. I mean, I, I know that we've been through this, I don't think it's excessive. I mean, I think, you know, especially, God forbid, the first time we do have an officer involved shooting where the officer is harmed or killed, I mean, this is gonna be running way ahead. And I know that that's morbid and probably there's no way to justify that statement, but.
But that time you could have, you needed 10 officers then, so, I mean, where's that line?
I, that's not what I'm saying, I'm not saying that, I mean, you could have five officers working right now and I could stop a car and he could get out and shoot.
Sure.
You know, the number of officers on at that specific time doesn't matter. The number of officers that you're willing to, to support and maintain, I think, is going to improve morale, is going to improve the public perception. Very seldom have I ever heard, man, I can't believe I've seen a cop car here every hour on the hour, you know, driving through my neighborhood, what the hell are they thinking? You know, nobody wants to see less police presence, you know, unless they're doing something that they're not supposed to do. You know, I think that if we have the ability and can do it, I think that it's, that it's good for the city. I think it's good for the department. If we don't have the money and can't do it. If we don't have the money and can't do it, you know, that's a decision that this board has to make. And, and we'll continue to operate. I mean, that's, that's what we do. But like I've said in the past, they're not gonna give me anything if I don't ask for it, so I think that we can justify it. I think that, again, I'm not asking for twenty-three officers or, or, you know, asking for the moon, I'm asking to, to have a dedicated detective that can pull the load off of us while we're doing the extra work of the police clerk and, and still keep us from being underst- understaffed during the, I mean, all year. We have trainings all year, we have vacations all year, we have vacancies all year. You know, I'm, I'm not saying that this is gonna eliminate any turnover. I mean, the sheriff's department pays well, they have turnover. But I think what is going to help is, is our recruiting habits and, and success and our ability to close cases and successfully prosecute people, investigate drug cases, and, and just improve the, the bank for the citizens' buck. You know, they, when they call the police, because their house has been burglarized, they want to be made whole, they want to find out who did it, they want to get them prosecuted, they want to get their stuff back. And the more opportunities we have to, to make that possible for them, I think that we need to take.
Okay. And you've always, ever since you've been here, you've done an excellent job on your budget standing, and it's always actually coming in low, so...
So, the twenty thousand is for one officer?
I mean, to add the eleven officer.
Yes. So, we would just have to figure out where the increases would come from, right? Sustainable?
But, again, I'm not, you got the other side of that, which you gotta look at, though, is what happened to the judicial side in that budget, because that other salary went there, so, which we haven't got to yet, but what came out of his went over there, so if you're looking at the big picture...
Well, you know, we're, I understand that, so, still gotta try to fund it, I think.
Right.
Still got a question and stuff. The city budget that funds the police department funds what other departments?
Legislative, judicial, administration, building department, community and economic development, and fire department, and the welcome center.
But it also subsidizes the park, right?
Well, yeah, we move money from there every year as well to balance the park budget.
Nine, about ninety thousand dollars a year.
We got it down to sixty.
No, we got it down to sixty-five.
I gotta say this and stuff, but I think out of some of those other departments, I'd rather see cuts there and something done with the police department.
Anybody wanna make a motion and vote on this and...
This is just a work session, we can't make a motion, can we?
Well, you gotta decide.
We're gonna decide whether we're gonna...
You gotta tell us what number to put in the budget. So, hey, how you gonna do that?
Twenty thousand already in here?
Yeah, he's got it in here.
The extra officer is...
But what about the increase, the pay increase?
That's not in here.
There ain't, there's no increase on any of it, right?
Normally, I mean, at the end of this meeting, I was gonna give you these sheets, and they represent what the impact is across all of the departments of a percentage increase that we generally consider as cost of living. It's just across the board. You authorize a percentage, then we leave it to the department head to decide among their employees, based on their performance, how to allocate it.
Right.
And, um, that, that, that's gonna happen this, this evening.
Right. But we're not talking about the same increase.
That's not, that, that's not the increase he's talking about.
Yeah, Eddie? I think we, I, I would like to do the officer thing, and then when we got that, do the raise thing. Talk about them with the raises and talk about everybody else with the raises, yes, same time. It's okay with me? Everybody in favor of that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Is that what you needed?
Anything, what about the other additional expenses that he's covered? You okay with all those?
Yeah.
Yes.
Computers and the printer, the network printer, I mean, I, you know, just...
All of it.
Okay.
I wouldn't, if I, if I had an objection to something, it wouldn't be before you.
Yeah. Well, we're gonna, I, we're gonna have the officer, right? Yeah.
Yeah. All right. No, we're gonna, um, so you don't have to wait.
Waiting long enough, Dina and Jason.
We're gonna go over the, uh...
I, I read the communication that has questions, um, so I...
We give, we, we fund economic development. Pardon me?
Page eleven.
For the, for the, for the chamber. I'm gonna have the page eleven for wholesome master.
I got four pants, I'm gonna bring it in, I bought it.
I got page three.
It's, uh, nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. That includes the, uh, website name. Chamber provides, aside from services to their members, and we are a member, um, you know, there's, for many people, when they think about inquiring about a community, they start with a chamber of numbers. So, the chamber's the first point of contact often for particularly business and industry inquiries. And so, the staff, Dina and, and an assist, an assistant, are available, they have material, they have information about the city, and they coordinate, they work closely with Sandra on the economic development side. They also pay for website maintenance, for our Visit St. Gin website, so this, if, if this nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, if you didn't give it to her, nine hundred a month? Nine hundred and sixty dollars a quarter would have to be put in Sandra's budget to pay for it, so it, uh, it isn't just, it isn't just money we give the chamber for those other services, it's also paying to maintain our website. Think it's fine. Okay. Go on, go.
Thank you.
That's an ending, that's enough.
You listen to that, too. What are you gonna do when he goes off? We'll just go ahead, and I mean, and you're familiar with the Simo Regional Planning Services on that budget? I've, I've made this speech before. This is my third regional planning organization that I've dealt with in my career. The first two were always obstacles that we had to overcome in order to get a grant submitted or whatever. This is the first time I've ever worked with a regional planning organization that is a service agency that helps you. So, I, I'm, I'm kind of a fan of the level of service we've, we've received from them, like administration of our TIF funds. I mean, it's, it's a huge task that only some people are capable of doing, and Chauncey's capable. I'm a little concerned...
He's retiring.
About Chauncey's retirement.
Yeah.
Uh, and I'm, at this time, next year, I may be sitting here saying, you know, I don't know, we're getting our buddies worth, but for right now, I'm certainly satisfied with the service they provide.
Well, we had Tom Tucker before Chauncey.
And he was...
He was really good.
He's legendary.
Chauncey come in there and he was cool.
And I have confidence that the board's gonna find somebody who's competent to, to do, to do it.
Yeah, yeah, he was, he's still working. Yeah, he was great.
I don't have a... They know me.
Going to evaluation.
They know me. Well, I got the general fund, K-9 fund, I got everything, I think I got them all. Yeah, the ones I brought with.
Where we going?
Where we going? Um, let's do another easy one, they're all pretty easy. The, uh, well, the K-9 fund.
K-9 fund, it's thirty.
Okay, that looks good. It's just donations, you know?
All right.
All right, the judicial department, you all know about the clerk situation.
Correct.
Uh, so, um, the salary figure was increased to reflect the additional hours that she's going to be charging for legislative. Eric said they were splitting it fifty-fifty, but the workload wasn't fifty-fifty. The workload was more like eighty-twenty or ninety-ten, uh, since she took over the, the court clerk's job. And, uh, so, that twenty-three thousand was the, the, the fifty-fifty, and so it's increasing by eighteen thousand to kind of reflect the difference in the, not the difference in the hours that she's devoting to, it's just the difference in the allocation of the, of the work. Other than that, nothing's really changed. You have questions on that one?
It's a, it's a, it's a increase in over thirty thousand dollars.
Well, that's, that's, that's payroll increase.
He put twelve thousand in infrastructure under the...
Oh, for doing the room, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna, that, we, we, we realized it was gonna cost that much, what little improvement we're gonna, we're, we're getting, we kinda asked Eric to look at, because of his concerns about the, the space, like reconfiguration of the overall space that we'll propose to you at a kind of a later date, so that twelve thousand in there, just to change out the one room office for, for Lisa, but we think we're gonna ask you to consider a larger picture, capital improvement type project.
For the whole police department, right? For the whole area back there, right?
Creating the separate office for the court, because we have to have that, we can't mix. And then reconfiguring the, the police department's space to be more functional.
Don't we have to do something upfront to bring in compliance as well?
That improvement, yeah. Well, no, there's no requirement for us to do anything, but we talked about creating that foyer to make the area where money is handled more secure.
Plus, and then Bob's got some issues upstairs.
Yeah, now we're gonna have some, I don't know how much we put in for that.
I, I think that our renovation would cover a lot of that.
Okay. We down to the general fund?
Yeah, what about the band, the cemetery, and the special roads? Throw the band out.
You gotta vote that out.
There's a band, yeah, there's a band tax, uh, tax, money comes in, the money goes out, uh, we have a band board, the board decides on, uh, the grant program where money is distributed throughout the community to worthy projects to create music. Only goes to music and some transportation costs for musical group, but it can't go anywhere else, we can't spend it for anything other than that.
What are we, what are we putting in on a year in the desert?
Ten. We do ten over the summer, we do the Christmas concert, uh, in the church in December. They do, um, smaller group concerts throughout the year, juried fed and...
Plus grants go to the Lions Club for entertainment, the Welcome Center when they...
A German band is considered...
Yeah, that's part of the municipal...
How many people in the band is your...
Off the top of my head, they give me, I wanna say it's seventy. Yeah, right at seventy is the limit that the, but it's, it's never that many at once, because of vacations and this and that and whatever.
And they get paid on a performance.
Right, yeah, it's not like, yeah, you don't, it's not a salary position. My, uh, my question on the band fund is the, um, the CD reserve, uh, section there, what's that for? What are we doing with that?
Savings, you can use it for buying new equipment usually is what...
We talked one time about putting a band shelter up in the park, and that was several years ago, we don't, but there were ten, but...
I know, it's been mentioned recently, again, I know...
I'm just now getting ready to get on there right now.
A lot of the, the downtown merchants that I've spoken to are, are pretty opposed to the concerts moving away from downtown.
Yeah.
They like the, uh, the crowd, as it were, being there to buy ice cream and whatnot.
Well, I, I totally agree with you that, I mean, you ought to have some emergency money, I mean, just, just in case, but to have fifty thousand dollars sitting in the bank, not making music doesn't make sense.
Let's hire Aerosmith and put on a concert out in front of the church on a fancy stage.
There you go.
But, um, you know, if, if the, the, the building of a band shell thing, I had a thought, there's that, um, I know it's county building, but that, uh, building, the downtown there that, next to the funeral home, that I've heard they're gonna tear down.
It's, it's coming down.
They're gonna tear that down and put a parking lot there.
That's, that's the plan.
How about we put a stage at the end of the parking lot?
Well, we can talk to the county about that.
That could be something that could be used not only by municipal band, but by other groups throughout the year for concerts and presentations and programs and things like that, just a thought I had.
Would that be big enough, though, John? I mean, the desert's pretty big.
Yeah, I don't know if you're, you're, you're parking cars there to listen to the, the band.
I see, oh, that's gonna be a problem.
I don't know, there's many people sitting in those cars. I think they park there and get out.
Where do you think those horns are?
They'll launch out. I think they're setting up there, because the advent of the, uh, portable folding chair, those bag chair things now, people get out, they sit.
Past band directors.
The advent of the folding chair.
Is it?
Yeah. I don't think those...
Maybe they just don't like the job you're doing.
Yeah, I don't think they, I don't think...
Let's move, we ready to move on with that? Cemetery fund?
It's, it's also a dedicated fund, but let's talk about the, um...
Very minuscule.
The payroll aspect of it, salaries.
I had talked to, uh, Gary, my good friend Gary Roth, and I asked Gary, I said, how much does it cost you to mow that cemetery? And we put a pencil down, and we came up with about, it's gonna cost about twenty thousand dollars a year to mow those cemeteries. That's a lot. We gotta talk to Gary about that and see if that's right.
Well, we have the figure.
I came up with right at ten thousand based on just the time for people that he's been saying.
So, that's just their hourly work rate. So, if you add thirty percent to that, you're now at thirteen thousand.
You got more that we bought for...
If you calculate overhead and maintenance, um, I don't think that's unreasonable. So, we think that, and, and...
See, the problem is, when we did that out in the past, we always took the low bid, which was probably not the best thing.
Well, I think we were looking at a fifteen thousand dollar, um, bid, had we bid it out this year, at least that's what I'm told.
We need to bring right those specs if we're gonna bid it out.
Well, we're not gonna bid it out, we're gonna continue to do it, because it's, I think everybody...
Any complaints issued.
No.
It's being well taken care of. Every year, otherwise.
I got a couple of, you know, have, you know, when are they gonna mow the grass next?
Right.
And we get on it, but, uh, but it never, never...
We got a little shabby looking last week.
Yeah.
A lot of things they had.
Well, and they had juried fed.
Yeah, yeah, I have a lot of things to do.
So, yeah, but overall, it's much improved, at least.
Right, what?
Our lives have been improved by it. So, we're saying that salary issue ought to be at least double.
On the park?
On the cemetery fund.
Yeah.
And, uh, I don't know, we, we bring in a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. You know, we don't spend much money, so, I would say kick up maintenance.
So, we, we bring in, we're gonna bring in an estimated a hundred and sixty-nine, seven fifty?
No, we're gonna bring in thirty-four thousand, seven fifty, we got a hundred and thirty-five sitting in the bank.
Okay. Well, that's a, I see, thirty-four, seven fifty, and we're gonna spend nineteen-five thirty?
So, if we bid nine... Add another forty-seven hundred, we're still, still short.
If your expenditures were like twenty-five, is that kinda what you're saying?
Yeah.
So, you can still end up with a...
And I'm saying, let's take it up, let's kick it up, put five thousand in maintenance, kick it up to thirty thousand for expenditures against our anticipated revenues of thirty-four, seven.
Right.
seven.
Right. I think that's a good idea.
Yep.
There had, there had been in the past, uh, the Foundation for Restoration would always take a project and, and end up putting some money into it, and they would come to the city and ask the match to do some restoration in the old cemetery. I heard they're gonna do some this year, they, they haven't been...
They're doing it, they're doing restoration already.
Because they haven't some, any assistance.
No, not any assistance, but they...
We always took it out of this budget.
Yes.
Why should you increase salaries, you doubled it?
We double salaries and add, and, and kick up maintenance to five thousand.
For this year?
Mm-hmm. Under twenty-one.
Yeah?
Yeah, under infrastructure, my eight thousand, that's the fifteen thousand that we give to the foundation to maintain the, second page.
Oh, okay. Okay, so you got an idea, sure.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, and again, excuse my ignorance, because I'm new, I can still play the new guy card. So the, the budget for twenty seventeen, I'd, that looks like it had some contract labor that we're not gonna have now going forward, because we're mowing ourselves, right, that's what that is. The budget before was sixty-seven, six-twenty, and now we're budgeting nineteen, five-thirty. Was all of that, how, that's a big difference in numbers, I'm trying to figure out how to reconcile that. How do we spend sixty, sixty...
That's because it didn't add up, it didn't add up right.
Oh, it's a mathematical error in the...
It's a formula.
Formula error, okay.
I added salaries to it and I didn't increase that or add it.
We had that road paving in there too, about fifty thousand.
Yes, but it still didn't add up right. I found it was not in there.
So it should, so it should be seventeen, seventeen, six-twenty? Yeah, I see, that makes more sense, because that was a big jump from previous years.
About seven, eight thousand dollars.
Forty-one, fifty-five, Sue, how come cemetery lots sales are projected?
How do you predict, how do you project that? We just...
That's only like two, isn't it?
Hmm?
What, we like a five, or an L?
For outside city, inside is a hundred.
Two hundred?
Two hundred.
Two hundred and fifty?
It's a hundred, it's a hundred per quad if you're a resident.
Okay.
It's a five hundred if you're non-resident.
I mean, we're, you know, we're right on track this year for that seven fifty figure.
Hmm?
We've got revenues of, I'm sorry, the, um...
No.
I don't know, wait, I'm looking the wrong line, I think.
Yeah.
Seven fifty there.
No, a thousand.
That's interesting. We were lying about that seven fifty.
More than thirty-nine hundred.
Why shouldn't we?
That would require thirty-five thousand dollars.
I think I've always put a thousand in each year.
Because of the, we bring in more money, we expand the...
Ready to move on?
We're ready to move on, special road fund is where we put that seventy-five thousand dollars, we spent a little bit of it, uh, it's sitting there hoping we're gonna get work done with the special road district. Uh, downtown Tiff fund is what it is.
What it is, what it is.
The, uh, we do levy fund.
Party two, thank you. I dropped mine, so I, I think I'm back to normal.
Yeah, mine, they need place, once I got four, three, four, damn. I mean, I don't know, it's kind of small, I'm gonna come it out.
So the levy fund, I think we're gonna be looking at, I mean, I wouldn't do anything with it, but as long as we hear from the core, and we decide what we wanna do, we'll do this budget amendment to achieve that, that goal.
This is the, where the fire truck proposal is, yeah.
So if we decide we need five hundred thousand dollars in this fund instead of two million three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, then we, we will make that amendment when we get the information we need to make the decision.
There ain't no way to expedite the decision, is there? I mean...
Just call them and bug them again.
You know what's gonna happen?
We're gonna give a pricing period.
You know what's gonna happen? They're gonna say, "We all had to go to Texas," and it's gonna be delayed for another six months.
Well, we've already heard that.
We just heard that this week.
See, I knew it.
We had a meeting yesterday in this room, that very statement was made.
We moved, is this our levy, our CD to here?
Uh, the debt service fund, you can't do anything we're doing about anyway.
About two million.
No policy to be made there, uh...
There's two point nine million in two thousand fifteen in the CD, then two thousand sixteen there's one seven nine seven, but this increased a lot, so it went up to here, to the estimated front balance. Why would you move it from one to the end?
There's nothing for them. No decision to be made there either.
Right here, there's two point nine million there, left year seven nine seven.
Okay, we're down to, what? Debt service fund. Do we already do that?
I thought we did all that, I thought we did.
Okay. Are we done?
That's that movement there.
Okay. This sheet...
Dick? Dick?
A million of this went to the PD building.
You got one for me, Bob?
I got two.
You got two?
Sure, they want one. So Sue said, okay, over each department's payroll, if we gave a cost of living increase of a certain percentage, what effect would it have on the budget? The sewer and water are, are, based on the time that the administrative staff devotes to maintaining the sewer and water billing system, so it's not sewer or water maintenance costs, it's just we charge against the sewer and water fund, uh, their, their administrative time.
Is that just Laura?
No, it's a sum of everybody, except me.
Sum of everybody?
Yeah.
What do you mean?
Well, because I don't do the billings or take any payments unless somebody gets here early and I happen to be here, and I don't know what to do, I just take...
Pam and Sue and Bob Bunnell and...
Not Bob!
No.
Carla?
Megan, myself, Pam, and Laura.
Okay. So Carla don't do it anymore?
No.
If it's department, or if an employee should give it or not. I got you, all right.
Well, I mean, we approve them the authorization to give that increase, and like, let's say you're a department head and I'm on your, I may not, so you say, "I don't get it."
Now, what, the way, the way it has been handled is, we don't take that three percent and necessarily spend it, it's just what you're authorizing us to consider for an increase for each individual employee. So, as an example, one year, I gave three percent to, uh, there were three people involved, and I gave the three percent to two of them, and I only gave the other one two and a half percent, because we had some problems, you know, so I, I couldn't reward behavior that was not as good as I thought the other employees were doing. And that's what, and so that's what you're basically saying, is you may increase any employee's salary by three percent, but you gotta do it based on your performance evaluations, and any personnel experience you've had, like a reprimand or something that you put in the file, that would be a factor that you would consider in whether to give them a max or something less than that.
Can you mix and match? Can I say, "Well, let's give the, the, the park people a two percent, but let's give the police a three percent"? Is that possible?
You can do whatever.
It's not like a line, you have to do the, the whole line down?
Generally, your... My question is that, why do we have to, why do we have to say everybody, every department gets an increase?
You don't.
Yeah.
A little bit of, looks like...
We're just giving you the information of what the budget included, package is.
Yeah, the impact.
You can do none, all, some, whatever you wanna do.
Pick out your department.
We've always, in the past, Bob, gone across with strict percentages rates for...
Right, yeah, I was here for the last one, and stuff, and I...
That seems, that worked out real good.
So as far as the department head is the one responsible for that.
With my, with my consent, I mean, they get the...
Well, you, yeah, you're working with you, yeah.
Okay, before we vote on these races or whatever, uh, what's the insurance look like this year?
Uh, health insurance is coming in at, uh, just under ten percent.
Okay.
And...
Well, what we were, if we stay with the company we were, we're looking at twenty-six percent, but we're not saying we can't.
So, we found a policy that's comparable to what the, they have now, um, there's obvious differences because the number's all different, but, uh, overall, it's a ten point one percent, but the employee will be absorbing some of that because they're doing family coverage.
Okay.
So, our expense will be under that, that...
Are they choosing the buy-up plan versus the base plan?
Right, under that ten percent, and we'll, uh...
And we're gonna continue to provide.
Spent simple dollars, how much is that an increase for the city over the year?
Isn't it, isn't it in the budget already? Isn't it in what?
Yeah, we figured ten percent in the budget.
And what, ten percent was figured in the totals that was presented to you all in your...
Right, I realize, how many dollars was that? In other words, how much is...
We just kept looking at it, and I'm trying to remember what the total dollars was. Should go get it.
You can move on, I'll call you.
It's a lot.
I don't, I see it every year, but...
Yeah.
I just, and I don't know if it's a fair question and stuff, but I just wonder how many people here are part of an insurance plan that offers free dependent coverage.
Oh, that's a, it's extraordinary.
It's what?
There aren't a whole lot of employers that do that anymore.
Right.
But, Bob, I think...
And the ones that do are generally government, because they're trying to compensate that.
I think, I think that's the reason we keep a lot of the employees we keep, because of that. You know, if we start taking things away from them, and we're giving them ten dollars an hour to work out in the street, they're gonna be going some other place. You know what, let's don't cut this from them, you know, this, no, I'm, I'm just saying, this, this is something we've always been proud of, Buck's been proud of, I've been proud of it, through all the years I've been in office off and on, something I've been very proud of, that we do that for our employees.
But my statement was fair, is there's very few places that have...
Yeah, yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that.
Two hundred and ninety-one thousand.
How much?
Two hundred and ninety-one thousand.
Increase.
Totally.
For an annual premium?
No, I'm just talking about the increase.
Um, we went from two sixty-three to two ninety-one.
And then boy, the employees pick up some of that cost.
How much?
I can't say.
It depends on what they offer.
How much do they picked up, picked up?
It depends on which...
Nice word, picked up.
That's a thing.
It depends on which plan they chose.
Okay.
I thought we said...
For instance, on a monthly basis, you know, we have, based on our employee census, our monthly basis, eighteen thousand, nine hundred and seven, and the, because employees opted for the upgraded plan, there's an additional five thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars, but they're paying...
They're paying that five thousand per year.
It's not that full of money.
But still, out of the city cost, we're looking at a twenty-seven thousand dollar increase.
Yeah.
So where does that money come from? In the overall scheme of things?
It's already in what you looked at.
Comes out of the general revenue.
Yeah, general fund.
Right, which lowers our reserve if we don't increase revenue.
That's the way things work.
I'm just, you know, you look at the whole picture, you know, everything adds up, every increase adds up, and where does it come from?
Comes from diminished increase in the reserve.
Or, or diminished service to the citizens in order to maintain reserve.
Yeah, there you go, good point.
And you don't wanna do that.
Decide what not to do.
I don't think there's many things you can decide not to do, which, you know...
But you always got, it's, you still always got that discretionary money, you got some for streets, I mean, that's the part you can, about the only place you can pull it out of.
Out of where?
You still got some discretionary money that was in, in Gary's budget, right, for streets, we had some money in there, didn't we?
Yeah, it's not very much, mostly comes out of the dedicated sales tax, which is accounting fund.
I'd like to put more money into streets.
Yeah, I know, but that was, that's always where the extra always went. I don't know where that comes from, which is, which is why I think we're having to play catch-up on some of those streets. Oh, sure.
Our officers get those dependent coverage, right? That is, that is very attractive, wouldn't you agree?
Yeah.
And I don't know if our other entities in the county does that or not, but there's just, there's just some kind of pocket for that. Right.
I don't get that at school. I don't get that at school.
Right, okay.
But we have to decide, right, Mary, what, what...
We gotta move on, let's move on with this.
We gotta decide what percentage we wanna give and go from...
What percentage you wanna give to who?
Across the board.
You wanna do it all across the board?
Across the board.
What about the increase we talked about for the police, we're gonna do a bigger increase? I don't like doing it across the board, I think you can, I think you can go each admin...
I...
Do your evaluation?
I don't.
Oh, the board does.
How, how do you go?
Why wouldn't you? What's the difference?
No, I'm, I'm just saying, I, I don't...
Well, we just go administration, well, we'll give them two percent billing, you know, we just, it's either, it's, you, you don't have to give everything.
Yeah, but, but, I, I know, I'm not saying that, but I don't know, what do you base that on? Just pull it out of the sky, well, you get two percent?
What's the cost of living increase now, what is it this year?
You gotta...
I think, with the exception of the police, though, you've got so much overlapping, at least within water, sewer, um, I, I mean, at least in, certainly in the office, that you, you're gonna have a hard time separating to say that you might give water three and sewer two and a half, you're accept, you're, I, I can see some problems.
You can't do that.
Huh?
Well, in terms of administration, you can't, you're gonna have to do the same thing for water and sewers you do for administration, you're building, at least a facility like this.
Right, same with park and street, because...
Park and street, yeah, can't be separated.
If, if there's gonna be one different one, if one, if one different one would be the police department, we'd decide on that.
We can decide on that.
Right, but other, across the board, I could see that we...
What was the social security causing the increase, did you?
It was like over three percent.
I don't see, I've never voted ever for anything, in all the years I've been here off and on, I've never voted for less than three percent, never.
That's usually the standard.
And I think that's...
Where I work.
I think that's going a little bit low. I would like to see it higher, but then, once again, where's the money gonna come from? So, someone else, say something, please.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Judicial isn't on this list, and Lisa would then be isolated by herself, would she fall under administrative?
Well, we, yeah, we should, we would do it for her.
Okay.
Yeah. She's in, she's in the police picture, though. Thanks, Eric.
What's gonna be, fellas?
I'm okay with the three, I think, I think we look at the police at four and a half or five, but in saying that, and God, I hate to say it with you two guys sitting there, the four and a half or five percent of your guys' salaries versus the guy at the, the guy at the bottom is, I think, I would say four and a half or five across the board, I think that part needs to be adjusted to, to bring the bottom up.
Yeah.
You, you know what I mean?
Yeah, right, yeah. That's fair. Well, who figures, uh, salaries for like Eric and Gary, the, the department heads?
Their salaries are, based on what their salaries are, whatever you approve as increase, it's up to you to decide whether to give them all or some portion of that increase. So, I mean, I guess what I'm hearing here is, the three percent's across the board, the whatever percent, four and a half percent, would then be considered for the, the-
Police.
Police employees below command staff.
Well, how much money would that be if you're thinking, say, in four and a half on twelve what?
Well, right now, you've got the, the, the police at, at four and a half, seventeen thousand two hundred dollars, it's gonna be less than that.
Well, if you- I'm talking about for this guy that's making twelve dollars, what, how much?
Five percent would be about sixty-five cents.
Yeah. So it doesn't get you thirteen, doesn't, thirteen and a half dollars then?
And that's why- And the figure, the figure here includes these gentlemen?
That's what I'm saying, that's fi, that's five percent across the board, if you maybe didn't, if you looked at the bigger salaries and didn't do them at five percent, you can kick the bottom part up a little.
In other words, Eric, you gotta give your five percent back to us.
Well, I'll give it to the officers.
Well, what you showed us earlier didn't include raises for your, correct, it was just everybody below you two, correct.
Did what?
What you showed us earlier, it didn't include him and Jason, it was just everybody below him.
So would you say it on three across the board for everyone but the-
I would go a little, I would go three and a half personally.
I would too.
Well, what about four, I mean Sue said it's over three, you know, for the, what'd you call it?
Social Security cost of living increase, they calculate every year, cost of living increase.
That's a good, that's a good thing to use.
It's a standard that people look at.
Want to go four percent, Buck?
I would. Yeah, and then maybe decide on the police department separately, because that needs to be more than four and a half. What?
I said, we can leave it that way, we got more.
It don't matter, I would think.
How is our department head's salaries decided?
It's negotiated when we employ somebody.
When we hire them?
Well, yeah, when you hire them.
Based on performance, experience and-
Yeah. Yeah.
So that increase then, if, if they get a three percent increase and stuff, that passes on to the department head also?
Yeah, and I will decide whether I think the department head is worthy of the-
Oh, you just said, right.
You will decide.
You're the supervisor of the department heads and they're the supervisor of their employees.
After we do employee evaluations and-
But you're part of each individual employee's evaluation then?
Well, every department head evaluates their own employees and they submit it to me with their recommendation. And if I have extraordinary knowledge of something, I take their recommendations. I then evaluate each department head. And, and, and then at the end of this process, you will decide, you know, who's setting the need about you.
As far as getting them basic pay guys up, or the lowest paid in the department, up to like, say fourteen and then incremental on the others, you'd have to have at least ten percent, wouldn't you? For the police department.
And that would put them in line with the lowest non-commissioned officer at the sheriff's department, you said?
Yeah, the lowest non-commissioned officer at the sheriff's department starts at sixteen, seventeen plus.
So that'd still be under that, yeah.
Well, I don't think we use ten percent one year, that's for sure, that's-
Well, I, I just threw that out there to try and get some perspective, yeah.
Yeah, I know what you're stepping in, but it's something.
Four and a half, seven, what, what's that?
So how does, how does this budget and the increases compare to in the past?
For salaries?
Well, just in general, the insurance increase, the twenty, I mean, is that-
This health insurance increase is, is, has been less than this, but it's been more than this, so it's about a level.
We had one year, wasn't it twenty something? Yeah, twenty something.
Right after Obamacare was adopted-
Right.
And everybody was running scared, nobody knew what it was going to be, we got this, like, everybody's price of food. Then it kind of settled down.
But I'm talking about everything in general, all of the increases, all of the additional budget items, you know, how does this budget compare to budgets in the past? I mean, are we in line looking at the increases, are we dipping into reserves?
I, I think we have a few more extraordinary capital increases budget than we have had in the past. Like, the four, or the, you know, Skits here lower, that kind of thing. But, you know, revenues are stable, the organ heads have done a really good job of controlling all of their other expenses. So, I guess Gary's budget, even with those, that extra, he's still kind of under what he was doing last year. Honestly, you know, Eric's proposal was the only one that represents significant change.
Okay, but the, whatever it is for those guys.
So we're gonna go with the, across the board, three, three point five percent, with the, what are we gonna go?
I was recommending four. And then pull out the police department, decide where, put them. And, you know, it doesn't have to be all used either, because it, it's not all used every year, right, Martin?
No, no.
Depends on the department.
That's the ceiling right there.
Yeah.
Depends on the person.
Yeah, so it couldn't be more than the, well, the police department's in there, but you need to decide what we're gonna put them.
Your talent is only as good as what your employees-
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, well, we want to keep those, we want to keep-
The balance, we, most of the employees, we gotta keep the balance.
Yeah.
Is everybody in agreement with that, with the, across the board with the, except for the police, a four percent increase, the max?
I like three and a half myself. I, I don't want, I mean, if you're going to, maybe you shouldn't be comparing them, but now you're looking at, well, okay, I guess it depends on what you want to do with the police, but guys are getting up there.
Yeah.
I mean, you look at four and then if you look at, if you look at four and then if you say five for the police, what's, what's the diff- what's the difference?
Because you're already giving them an increase in health insurance.
No, no, not an increase.
And I guess you shouldn't look at it as, as if, there should be a bigger gap between your normal increase and the, and the police department, but what are we looking at?
If we're focusing on-
Not comparing apples to apples.
Right, if we're focusing on try to increase, um, um, younger, newer officer pay, you know, the four percent for everybody and then a five percent for, for them, there's just not much difference between those two, they're very close. And it seems, it's almost like a, a, a token, you know, here's a one percent.
Yeah.
So we go-
That's what I was saying, y'all was having to get up there to maybe seven.
We're starting to dip pretty far in the reserve, I mean.
Well, that's just for the police department.
I'm telling you.
It's hard to, it's hard to know what that increase would be if we're, if we're separating the command staff from others with this number. You know, you can look at, you know, four point five percent, it says it's seventeen thousand two, I figure five percent is nineteen one.
He said if he matched the, brought it in line with the sheriff's department, it would be about eighty-five thousand for all of his officers, excluding him and Jason.
Eighty-five thousand what?
Dollars, so, increase in line item salary.
So we go from seventeen thousand, that four and a half to eighty-five thousand?
That's a big-
No.
He's already got twenty of it.
That's for a new officer, isn't it?
That was for-
That's right.
Did that include your new officer?
Which are, yes.
Yeah, it did.
Oh, wait a minute.
Could we look at, at supplying the salaries that we have now and look at a base increase for their years of service that they have now, as opposed to a, of course, that raise, just, just go on and raise the base starting salary and then adjust that on their year of service that we have now?
Well, if I understand it, we, we tell you what percentage you're allowed to raise it and then you can decide how you do it, I think, is that correct?
Yeah.
Right. So, if, if you want to base it on years of service, I think you could.
Yeah, but I would like to adopt that then as the starting salary for a new hire. So that I don't have-
And that may not have an impact on the budget till next year.
Right.
But, but Eric, would you base it on their years of service in, in police work, when you hired somebody, or? Okay, so, so if you had, got ten years' experience, he'd fit in that.
We're this eleventh officer, so if we're giving all the other guys a seven percent raise, I would like to start the new guy out at a seven percent increase over our starting salary.
Yeah.
So it's in line with, with everybody else, he still won't be making as much as everybody else, but at least, starting out, he's not way down here and never gonna catch up.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that's how most places do it.
Yeah, I think that's the way to do it.
A school would do it.
Yeah, I think that's the way we do it at the embassy.
Yeah, but instead, you probably have a unified personnel program instead.
It's, it's a years of service and, and then levels of education across the top, years of service. Right, right.
My experiences in communities where they adopted that and then had a bad year and all of a sudden it goes to hell.
Right, right.
Except for the police, what, what we settled on, we talked about four, we talked about three and a half. We're not talking about the police here, we're talking about everybody else.
Yeah, everybody, yeah.
What's it gonna be, fellas?
What have we done in the past, what's?
Well-
Three.
We usually do three, what?
I think, three average.
Can we use, can we use the social security increase, can we use your three point eight?
That's what I was saying.
I mean, I, it's just a gun, it's just a standard indicator of what-
Let's go on.
Federal agency thanks the cost of living.
Three and a half, five and a half, let's go three and a half.
Let's stay with what we got now, we, we, we're, has everybody agreed, with the police, we're going three and a half?
Got it.
We're good, everybody good with that?
Up, up to three.
Up to three and a half, right.
That's decided by the department heads.
Okay, now let's settle a deal here with the police, what are we gonna do here? We've all stated we need to pay our officers more, we talked about base salary, we've talked about a lot here, and I know, we talked about, we're gonna spend some money here, but I think we want to be in line with, come in line with the sheriff's department, I think we need-
We'll at least get close.
Yeah.
Man, we're not even close.
Yeah, so, what are we gonna do to the more record?
Four and a half, do, two, seven fifty.
You'd really have to screen.
Oh, there you go. I like that.
Now, that's, um, the, the figures we have here are including, including the command staff. Is that what they're, is that what you're called? I'm sorry, I'm trying to use proper terms.
I use that term.
I don't know, I was just, yeah, just picking off any, I don't know. The, the head guys. So the, so the figure, you know, that if we did seven percent, it would be less than twenty-six eight, because it wouldn't include these guys. And I think these guys are included in the three point five. Yeah.
Yeah, unless you took that in, and instead of everybody else, other than those guys, some of them would get eight or nine versus, and those guys might get four or whatever, and, I mean, if you took it, took the five and a half, six across the board for the police department, across the board was included now, but they end up getting four, five, whatever, then somebody then lower down the line's gonna get seven, eight, nine, ten.
Right.
Our base salary, right out of the, you know, experience is what?
Twelve eighty-two. Twelve eighty-two.
And the sheriff's department's what? For non-commissioned even?
Seventeen eighty-two. Non-commissioned was sixteen seventy-eight, I think.
They had us as sheriff's departments, you could compare with other counties.
They're a well-being sheriff's department, I believe so.
Well, they're figured because of all the federal prisoners, I mean, they're a profit center supposedly.
Yeah.
To, to the sheriff's great credit, they're able to do that.
Yeah, right. County commission, but-
For that, I, I just am uncomfortable using that as the standard against which we have to compete, although I understand, share, I understand Eric's point. This is the city we live in, I mean, the city of our, we live in.
Don't have the money to compete with that, that's it.
Don't have a revenue producing jail.
Nope, don't have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which would be ten thousand more than, it'd be ten thousand more than three and a half, that they're already in for.
Okay, someone make a recommendation, right, Mayor.
Six percent for non-command staff officers.
How's that?
No, you're not, you're just observing.
If you, if you took six, if I'm figuring right, it would, it would mean about ten thousand more than, than what the three and a half would be, so you'd be at, your overall grand total would be somewhere around forty-three, maybe?
That's what I figured.
That's what you figured?
So John, you're saying for the non-command staff and then the command staff would be on-
At the three and a half percent.
What are you thinking of? That's good to know. So what's your proposal, John? Six percent?
Six percent for non-command staff officers. Three and a half percent for everybody else.
Excuse me.
It'll be a lot lower than forty-three.
Could've just used Jason, man.
And, and I don't, I don't want you guys to take that as a, a slight against the perceived job that I think you're doing.
Which is-
Okay, good.
I think this is a step in the right direction.
I don't either, but we gotta start somewhere, so, I mean-
Well, can't, like Rick said a while ago, you want to do it all this year?
Yeah.
And not raise it again, maybe figure next year.
I can see that reserve fund just dwindling, dwindling. But we better figure out some way to get that back up there, see where we are next year, or whoever's here next year on the board, see where we are.
I'm almost okay with the six alone. Six, I'm al- Somewhere to start, I'm okay with the six for that whole department, and then figure out what you want to do with those guys.
Well, I just figured they're covered by the, the, the-.
Three and a half.
Yeah, three and a half.
Three and a half.
Yeah, I gotta decide whether they're worth three and a half.
That's-
Oh, that puts our starting salary at three, thirteen fifty-nine.
That feels good, don't it?
Better.
Feels better.
Anything's better.
When you stop slaying your head against the wall.
Feels better.
I got, less pain now, less new pain.
All right, I, I was just looking at, trying to get, come up with that numbers, not knowing what those guys' numbers are. If, if the six percent was, was gonna add about ten thousand dollars. So whatever percentage that was, was to be, if you want to keep them two at three and a half and, and split, split the other two and a half percent of theirs amongst the other ones where they're getting seven or something, I don't know what it'd end up being, but I'm okay with taking the whole police budget of the, and, and just taking the whole thing at six. Yeah. Or take a different number, I mean, I-
Including the-
Including command, but leaving that, I don't know what that, I don't know what the number-
And then that would leave it up to him to decide if they were worthy of six or not.
The problem is identified as a disparity in the lower paid officers and his ability to compete.
Right.
And, and I think addressing that's important.
But I think, and something else that's interesting is even our higher paid sergeant, who's got fifteen years of experience, is still starting right at the starting pay for the, for the sheriff's department. But, yes, I, I agree in the, in the lower starting salary, but I mean, even like my employer is, is right at where the sheriff's department would start with zero experience.
Right now.
Right now.
Well, six percent will put them a little bit above that.
Yes.
And then, you know, and, and unless we're willing to figure out increased revenue options, I mean, you can't spend what you don't have.
Or cuts.
Right, or cuts to other services that some would probably argue are essential services too, so, I mean, it's all-
All relative.
I think six is a step in the right direction.
Okay.
I'd like to see more of it.
For the whole department?
For the whole department.
I think Dick's-
Hey, for the whole department.
Yeah.
It would be this hard to do that.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with it.
All right.
You okay with it, Rick?
I'm fine.
Everybody okay with that?
Let's do that. I like it.
And then Eric and Jason and I are gonna decide how to allocate that total?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, and the years of service thing, I think that's a great idea.
That's fine, we'll get together and come up with a plan.
Yeah, I like that.
See y'all later, y'all come back.
No further business, we're just gonna do about six percent here, so, unless you have what you want to talk about.
What are we gonna do again?
Huh?
What are we gonna do, your rate?
You gotta value it on first.
Always in the first.
Yeah, we didn't, I was shocked.
I could make a big long list, always max four months.
Yeah.
Keeping me happy, at least.
I think it's pretty important, it's important, man.
Well, Martin and I played golf a couple of times this summer, and I remember one time they might have been drinking, but he did say, you know- time that he might have been drinking, but he did say, you know, this is how Martin said, he said, you know, if you guys didn't pay me, I still come to work every day.
Oh, yeah, you're right, I believe, there you go, that is awesome.
There's the money.
That's not exactly what I said.
It was close to that.
I said, the only reason I do this job is because I want it.
Are you taking this?
I no longer have to, yes.
No, you can like adhere to them all morning, too.
Gotta be lucky, I didn't trip.
You always, I have that problem, whenever I think about salary, I go, what?
Do you have another one?
I wouldn't, man, I'd probably not, I think.
Yeah, it gets to where you don't want.
Man, my paperwork's intense.
You are, yeah.
Me too.
We supposed to do that back?
I don't think so, we keep these, right?
Yeah.
We keep that, but I got, already got...
Maybe in a couple of years, I'm gonna talk to guys about...
Yeah, maybe we can just set, cut your day off, give you an extra day off.
Not a budget I might keep there a while, but we're gonna get one.